When you're outright lied to, misled, and ghosted about things that mattered most to you. It makes it hard to collaborate when you are forced to remain near those who have abused you, or directly or indirectly let you or those you care about be abused. There are a lot of times where collaboration doesn't happen in our school district. This is one reason why collaboration is an important part of our current campaign. Sometimes collaboration amounts to communication, or simply doing your job so that others can do theirs. Let me share some examples from this year. At Almani High School, thermostats were changed without telling educators ahead of time or showing them how to use them. In some cases, the change resulted in rooms being uncomfortable to the point of negatively impacting teaching and learning conditions. While I do believe that the intent of changes was to save energy, I would like to propose making sure the thermostats are properly calibrated, making sure rooms are sufficiently insulated, and HVAC systems efficiency is maximized so that the ambient air temperatures stay at a comfortable temperature. Clearly, continued communication and collaboration with those at the work site experiencing the daily impacts of any changes can allow us to address climate change in a way that provides optimal learning environments. At Rosemead High School, there was a delay of next year's tentative assignments being shared with continuing educators with no explanation or apology. Our site director was in communication about that with the administration, who promised those tentative assignments, and they were not set out on time. A clear contract violation. While the tentative assignments have been sent out now, some teachers have already lost a week of valuable prep time that they could have used had they known their tentative assignments. In this case, the administration being slow to do its job and not keeping their promise to our site director and the implicit promise that our contract should provide showed a lack of collaboration, which stole time that could have been used to better advance the needs of our community. The most important instance showing, among other things, a breakdown in or outright lack of collaboration in our school district is in relation to the instances of sexual abuse in our school district community over the years. In this case, repeatedly, school and district administration hasn't done enough to protect us and our students from abusers. More situations of abuse keep turning up. In some cases, administrators didn't listen to students and educators and other staff, and then at least one example, they seemed to sit on information for about a year prior to acting when discovering a particularly egregious example of abuse. What stark contrast to the standard put on teachers. I once had to represent a teacher during a disciplinary meeting for not having responded to an email by the next workday. What a waste of time and energy that could have been spent on more important things like protecting our children. School board members and administrators of EMU HSD, when you nickel and dime your workers, when you don't pay people fairly, when you don't collaborate authentically, you participate in class exploitation and further marginalize and oppress the already most vulnerable students who are experiencing racism, sexism, anti-LGBTQIA plus hate, discrimination because of mental illness or physical disability or abuse. Do better.
Thank you. Is there anyone from CSEA here tonight?
No one here from CSEA.
No one here? Okay. Uh, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to item C, which is information, presentation recognition. So item one is presentation on a local control and accountability plan proposed budget for 2022, 2023. Dr. Zuniga?
Yeah, thank you, Vice President Diaz. We have, the first one will be the local control and accountability plan. Uh, this is obviously for the next year and the years to follow. Uh, Mr. Cecil, Assistant Superintendent for Educational Service, will be presenting this evening on our plan, providing you with an overview as well. Uh, followed by the presentation of the proposed budget for the 2022, 2023 school year as well. And as we transition, I know we have this presentation here. We'll log in Mr. Alatar, who will be presenting on the budget as well. Okay, so Mr. Cecil, good evening, and thank you for taking the time to put this together on our LCAP plan and to be, uh, prepared for the following school year and adoption of the plan.
Well, thank you, Dr. Zuniga and M Board. Um, we've been working, our departments have worked very hard on updating our LCAP plan for the 2223 school year. Um, this is a, you know, with all the different plans we have, making sure we all line them up and where we're gonna fund, and we're gonna grow different areas. So here's an overview of the LCAP plan for the 2223 school year. Hit down, there you go. So there's eight state priorities that we, um, basically align our plan to. Basic services, state standards, parental involvement, people achievement, people engagement, school climate, course access, and other people outcomes. Those are the eight state priorities that we pretty much, when we look at our plan and address these eight priorities. The next one is our goals. Um, we basically, when you look at this, you have the different priorities, eight priorities. Um, the first one, offer instructional by fully credentialed teachers and well-maintained schools. That's priority one. When we look at provide students with skills and courses uh, for college and career readiness, that falls under priority two and seven. Uh, we provide students with high-quality instruction that supports their academic achievement, that falls under priorities two, four, seven, and eight. Uh, and we provide varied opportunities to support, promote, and maintain a high level of parent and family engagements, that's priority three. And finally, maintain safe learning environments that actively engage students and promote social and emotional health, priorities five and six. So in this plan, or this presentation, um, basically, when you look at revision process, we would look at data review, and we'll be, I'll share what the different data we look at, the physical status, survey results, and additional input from educational partners. And remember, LCAP, and our LCAP plan is ECE, one of your weekly memos I share with you. Uh, we do make adjustments through the year where, uh, we need to add additional services, or where areas that we say, okay, we're covered in this, where we're gonna do other things. And you'll see in my previous presentations, you see, right now, we're working on the process of aligning all our five plans together in one comprehensive plan, and that's where we're taking place. But now this deals with just the LCAP plan. But you'll see as we move through the process, how they're all gonna line up with each other, and how each one of our plans supports the other plan. So the first area, data reviewed through the school year. We look at the AP scores, enrollment independent study, um, declining enrollment. We play that into factor, how we're making our budgets and stuff, how we're making adjustments. A through completion data, completion of the DNF rates. One thing we are looking at is equity for next year. That's gonna be one of our high priority goals, is equity in education to increase more of our most at-risk kids in the A through G process. We're working on those goals right now. Fairness and family engagement, um, we're actually growing that. We're gonna do more workshops with our parents. And as you know, that through our memos, we're actually putting funding into our parent, or where it used to be our PDC, it's gonna be our parent center, and we're working towards making that a reality. Okay, um, fiscal stats, Almani High School's ten cents continue to have declining enrollment. These are some of the constraints we have. Continue to receive one-time funding, this is what I talked about earlier, and making sure we're leveraging our funding from our different grants into one comprehensive plan for our district. When we look at the S and ELO, and the other one that's not, that I shared with you is our educator effectiveness, um, plan. So you'll see in the S and C, as we continue to work it, you'll see that there's less funds that we put out of the S and C um, towards professional development. But you also see that we had the educator effectiveness, that takes that part of it, and we're actually growing professional development. Where in the plan, we're decreasing it in the LCAP. Okay, survey results, and we did survey in April, May, the parents. We had, and we had 367 responses, students, we have 6,578 responses. That was done in February and April. Uh, we did a staff survey, had 139 responses. Uh, input from educational partners, LCAP committee, teachers. These are the different committees we worked with for, um, input for our plan. Teachers, students, parents, administration, union representatives, the LCAP committee, surveys, district English learner advisory, the D-LAC, the superintendent's, uh, superintendent's parent advisory committee, super PAC, site principals, SLPA, and the EMUEA, and the CAC presidents. We had a meeting with them for consulting purposes and getting input from them. The 2223 LCAP, as a result of the data analysis, the fiscal status of my high school district, input from educational partners, and review of the expenditures and the current LCAP, the following highlights revisions for the 2223 LCAP. Increase opportunities to promote and support students' engagement activities outside the regular school day, including additional TOSSAs to support activities. We really wanna build our afternoon programs at each site to include more students, more involvement, um, during, it could be yoga, it could be other support classes, it could be group counseling. We wanna provide more opportunity for students after school. Um, this is still one of the goals we have, uh, for this coming school year. So we put more funding into that. Increase academic support students, including extended learning opportunities, tutors, um, and access to credit recovery. What we're trying to do now is, one of the goals we have is through our A through G program. We wanna increase that, so we're gonna take a really close look at, you know, the kid, students that maybe got a D. Um, and we're doing credit recoveries to make sure they're always A through G. So we're really looking at those kids that, even if they need to improve their grades to get a B, we wanna make those opportunities to make sure, when they're freshmen, instead of waiting their juniors, seniors, we wanna start their freshman year and do a constant look at where the students are academically, and make sure we get as many students that are A through G ready. So that's when we look at that, that support. And increase support for mental health and social, emotional learning and wellness. So we're looking at providing more service through our wellness program. We're looking at bringing extra additional staffing in there to support it. So now our, um, our counseling, our contracted counselors, and our CSSCs can focus on that, and we have extra support 'cause one of my goals is that we never have the wellness centers closed. They're always open. That is one of my, that is a, it's a priority, and it's gonna happen. Okay, Almani has the LCAP. So, um, include goals and actions that support the eight priorities is a comprehensive plan, which includes some areas and services that support all students. 'Cause remember, what we're really looking at as the last one is supporting the most at-risk students, your English learners, foster youth, and low-income students. Timeline. So the Almani High School LCAP was submitted to LACO for pre-review in May. So what we do is we send it to them, this is our plan, give input from them, from LACO, and they send back suggestions, what changes we need to make, and we're doing that now. Um, that's already been done, so we should have that result from there, from after our pre-review. We made the changes they want us to make, and they're doing that now. And they said they'll give us it back on the 20th, uh, with the comments. Anticipated adoption date will be June 27th, that's that Monday at the next board meeting. And date will be submitted to LACO for final is June 28th. And that's the presentation. Um, we are working very hard, again, we're looking at bringing all these plans together, so it's one universal plan, and you'll see that as it grows. That's my summer project right now, to make sure these all line. We're actually working with staff during the month of July, when July hits. We're gonna look at, how are you gonna budget your funds? A comprehensive way of looking at professional development. So we have timelines when we're gonna get things done. So we're really looking at a timeline, early purchasing, early support of all these different plans. So it's gonna be a busy summer for Ed Services Department. Um, that's why I'm not taking vacation during the month of July and August, because this is like, this is a really intense time for us to make sure we do our due diligence to bring all the plans together for a comprehensive start of the school year. Okay, any questions?
Thank you. I'm gonna start over here on my right with Mrs. Torres de Sejas. Do you have any questions for Mr. Larry Cecil?
Yes, of course. This is, uh, I, I'm really very happy to see the, the way that you have been improving this LCAP. I remember at the beginning, it was really hard to understand what we were doing, but I am really happy the way that you are doing. One of the most important things that really, for me, is very, very important is the parental involvement. What are you preparing for parental involvement? What are, what is your goal?
We're looking at, we, we love the organization work. We're looking at more expanding it even... Is that me?
It's me.
All right. Okay. We're, we're looking at, um, number one, we're gonna do more parent workshops, we're increasing those. Um, we're looking at doing a, our own, you know, we have that multi-district one at the hotel. We're looking at doing that ourselves. Um, we really wanna do more Saturday workshops, so more parents can be involved. Um, we're really looking at forward to getting the PDC re-invised so we can use those evenings on Saturdays. We really wanna use as a hub for parent involvement. So we have various, are, they're already working together on how we can increase our parent involvement. We'd really like to do a parent ID card, where when parents get involved, we can tie that back to success of students. That's one of the initiatives we have, is where you have a parent ID card. Parents can scan it in, so we can find out, you know, what parents are involved, how we tie that back to student success. So we're looking at, again, expanding workshops, providing more support from our staff that do the training, along with our, our contracted programs. We, we love what we have now, we wanna grow internally um, and give more support from parents from inside our professionals that will do more training. I hope that answers the question, but we have a lot of initiatives.
Yes, I really like that one, because, uh, the basic, from the beginning for me is that we have to remember that parents are the first educators. And I think that in this program, we have, we have to go with all the things that, fantastic, all the things that you are doing, but let the parents know the importance of this and to encourage, to put enthusiasm, enthusiasm in their kids, in their children, to understand what you are doing, and they participate in that, and they feel that they want to have the same success.
I agree.
But I think it's really great what you are doing. Thank you, Mr. Cecil.
Thank you so much. Mr. Padilla, any comments or questions?
Just to piggyback, I'm, that's a, Professor Torres de Segris, Segris hits it right on the nail, on the head of the nail. Um, you know, just a suggestion, I know that Professor Torres de Segris brings the Parent 100 as part of the PTA, and so what you just said right now is music to my ears. One of the highlights this year for me has been, of this past year, was that we were able to conduct our very own parent recognition all by ourselves. We have the sufficient amount of parent engagement and parent involvement in our school district. So I'm glad to hear that, yes, as much as I love the City of Industry event and partnering, partnering up and collaborating with our school district, I really think that that's something that we can run on our own.
Yes.
And that we have the parental, uh, we have the manpower, not just to run it, but also to equip it and bring more parents involved. Because one of the things that has happened, you know, and I say this all the time, this is my 30th year. You have the, the gung-ho parents, and we're always recycling the same parents over and over and over, and there's nothing wrong with that, but we need to bring in some fresh blood, new ideas, more collaboration. So kudos to you, but look into that Parent 100, because it's got a lot of sessions that are not just what Almani, uh, Union High School District is dealing with, but issues that we're dealing in the state, and how parents can get involved, not just at our local level, but in the Parent Teacher Association. But Parent 100 is something that I think could help us...
Will do that.
Would do that. You're familiar with the Parent 100, right?
I've heard of, yeah.
I mean, it talks about a lot of stuff that our parents need to know, like, you know, about board members, about, you know, school safety, about, it's very relevant to what we're dealing with today. And then secondly, just a question for you, where are you putting attendance in and all this? And I know the answer to my question, but I'm asking you.
Attendance is infused throughout it, and that's one of the things, is like, you, you'll see that, um, one of the areas we're working on is a Saturday program.
Okay.
Um, to recoup ADA, but it's not gonna just be where they sit in a room, and it's where they, um, they actually, I'm sorry, it's where they actually will get like, so, social, emotional support groups, activities for a student to be able to recoup it, but also, um, as we work on our MTSS, is another process we're working on, is really honestly, is to re-look at every week where we are with students' attendance, and really attack that, and really give them, the kids, the support, the emotional... and really attack that and really give them, the kids, the support, the emotional support, find out why, because when you look at a tiered support, first tier is, okay, we won 80%. Now let's look at the 20%. Out of the 20%, you're going to have 5% go to tier three. So our goal is to make those early warning indicators and really live off that because right now we, as we went from ARMS to Synergy, now it's time for us to implement the Synergies MTSS process. Within that, we'll be able to track kids and their patterns for attendance. And that's when you have the early warning indicators, we want to do it every week. So who's tracking that? The counselors, the, the staff, we'll have a committees forum because that's one of the things in MTSS. So you have early warning indicator committees, where are these students, who are they? So we keep a track. That's one of the, one of the elements we have prior to the, the synergy under our ARMS. We had that dashboard going, we were looking at it. And then COVID hit and that really threw everybody for a loop. But our next step is to really form that MTSS dashboard so we can really track, you know, we have the green, yellow, red, like shared before, we're going to continue that. And so we can really sit there day by day, find out who are the kids that are in the yellow? Who are the kids in the red? The red really is your kids that need tier three support, yellow is tier two. So that's what I'm sharing with you is that we, we are putting, building that into our dashboard.
Good, I mean, that's music to my ears and I'm glad to hear that. I just want to see it moving forward because I know that when you say it's embedded, I know it's embedded, but we need to be very, what's the word I'm looking for? Very specific with attendance and we need to capture those kids and stuff. It's important, and a quote that I use is, you know, "The best gift parents can give their children is to bring them to school every day and on time." Because we can have the best, you know, one-to-one technology, we can have the teachers on special assignment, the curriculum specialists, the best reteaching practices, the best tutoring, the best shields up like they have at, at, at Elma, at Royal. But if the kid is not here, all of that does not matter. And if there's a person who knows that, it's you because you are the educational expert in the school district. So I look forward to seeing.
The growth.
The growth and, and, you know, you could talk about it all you want, but I want to see some data about, you know, where we're going with this. So kudos to you and I, I know that in that position, I heard you loud and clear that you're not taking that vacation. And, you know, do find some time because we can't just talk about mental health about our kids. We also need your mental health as well because if you fall apart or you're not here, then, you know, that, that's not a healthy thing, so you got to practice what you preach.
Yeah.
But thank you for your report. Thank you, that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. And just a quick announcement, it seems like the audio for the live broadcasting of this meeting is not working.
That is correct, I just confirmed that the audio is up, no.
All right. With that, Mr. Briones, you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Cecil, if you could go back to the survey results slide?
Okay, let me go back.
I just want to be sure that you turn on your mic so enough that we can hear you.
Right here?
Thank you. I do have a concern regarding the, the low responses, not only from parents, but also from staff. I mean, without comparing it to, to past years, just on the surface, 367 responses from parents doesn't seem like a whole lot. And since the survey went out in April and May, I'm assuming we did it at open houses, I'm assuming we did it at our Parent Engagement Academy, or Involvement Academy, would that be safe to assume?
I have to go back and discuss with you because she's the one that did the surveys.
Okay.
Okay, I can put it in my memo for you.
Thank you. And then the, the other concern is the lack of responses from staff. 139 responses also seems pretty low. You know, if I'm an educator who's here advocating for additional funds for my members, I would hope that I'm going to them and asking them, please respond to the LCAP survey so that the board knows where the needs are. I hope there's some engagement within, both EMUEA and CSEA to ensure that their members are providing responses. I know we have more than 139 employees in this district, we probably have close to 1,000. And if just under 15% are responding, that's incredibly low. You know, and I, and I don't, I'm not knocking you because I know you guys do what you need to do to get those surveys out, but I need to make sure that the members are responding so that we don't get complaints during negotiations telling us that we're not doing enough, that we're not providing enough funding, that a call is insufficient. Well, the, the responses to me are insufficient. So I just want to make sure that that information goes back to members. If you, if you want us to be able to engage with you, I, we need you to reciprocate and respond to these surveys because otherwise, you know, we can only do as much as we can do with the data that we're given.
We also surveyed, we use our surveys, you know, because we have several surveys we use, like the ESER. We have a lot of inputs, we still look at that, we just don't shuffle it away. But we do look at that when we do or make our decisions, really on our plans. So what is our, so basically, this is a combination also what we did in October with the ESER, but I can share that with you also.
And I think, and I think that's great, but I mean, according to the slide here, you know, the responses are, the survey went out in April. If you're incorporating responses from other, other surveys or other reports, great. Maybe it should be reflected here so it gives a clearer picture.
Okay.
But you know, on the surface, it looks like it's a very low response and I want to make sure that we're getting a clear picture from all of our stakeholders, students, parents, and our faculty and staff so that we know what the needs are and where those funds should be directed.
Understand.
Thank you, that was it, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Larry Cecil. It sounds like you're giving up the summer to do your due diligence, so appreciate that.
But I love doing it.
Yeah, it's important. So with that, I think we'll move on to Mr. Alatar, who's joining us remotely.
Yes, that's correct.
Keep hearing him.
Yeah, we have the audio backup, so we're going to transition now from the presentation to the actual Google Hangout meeting, which Mr. Alatar will come in. I'm not sure how that presentation will be put up on the actual screen. Well, if you can help me out with that, do we have to upload it or are they ready to go for the presentation for tonight? Okay, great, thank you so much. So I think we're ready to go and make sure Mr. Alatar is live and ready to go and...
Mr. Alatar, can you hear us?
I'll check in with him.
Mr. Alatar? Is he just going to share his screen or?
Yeah.
Okay.
He'll come in and I'll give him a call just to double-check if you allow me to, a few minutes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I think there is some echo here.
Can we turn his audio up?
Okay, Mr. Alatar, we can hear you, we're going to adjust your volume. Turn up, turn up, turn up, turn up. Testing one, two, testing, testing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
21st century skills, look at that.
Are you able to hear us, Mr. Alatar? So we can hear him, but he can't hear us.
Maybe we're muted?
Let me confirm that.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Yes, I can hear you. There is some echo somehow. I hear echo.
Sure.
Yes.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, or six-minute break, let's reconvene at 7:30, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us? Well, Alatar, can you hear us?
Hello? Yes, Ellie. Ellie, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, are you able to see us?
No, I'm, no, I don't see anyone, I don't hear anyone. All I see is...
We can hear you and we can see you.
Okay.
Because Arnie was trying to figure it out, so.
Okay.
It's saying on.
Okay, I'm on, okay.
Yeah, and are you able to see on your phone right now?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll keep you on the phone, I mean, I'm...
Keep you on the phone.
Okay. Sure. No problem.
Yeah.
I cannot see you, I cannot see the screen that you have. So if I, if I go ahead and do the presentation, I have to bring my, the presentation on my laptop and...
What, what do you see on the screen right now?
I see, uh, uh, obviously myself and two, uh, two folks who are connected. One is named Board Presenter. And the other one is Michael Patrick Ring.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to put up the actual screening of the presentation right now?
Okay.
So that enough you can see it.
Okay.
Can you put the, can you put the actual... Yeah. I'm going to hang up, okay, I'll play that.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Hey, Dr. Zaliga.
Okay, well.
Okay, I see the presentation, I just don't see, I don't know if you can hear me. I don't think you can hear me, or I can, I cannot hear you.
Can you hear me on the cell phone?
I see, I hear you on the cell phone, yes.
Perfect, so we're going to keep the cell phone on. We're going to be quiet while you present. And if you have any questions, I'll say it through the cell phone.
Okay, very good, okay. I'll go ahead and start then.
Yes, it is what it is, all right, let's go ahead and begin.
All right, good evening. This is the budget presentation. this is the budget presentation for, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, David Norton, the Director of Fiscal, is actually, uh, uh, attending his, uh, son graduation in Oregon, so, uh, I'll have the pleasure to present the entire budget for you. So next slide, please. So as a quick background, uh, you know, uh, the statutory requirements is AB twelve hundred. Uh, we go to the board, uh, three times a year to update the budget. Uh, one in December, one in March, first interim and second interim, as well as September, the unedited actual. Uh, next slide, please. This is the cycle of the, uh, activities for the budget. Right now, we are adopting the budget for next year. And, uh, moving forward with, uh, next, uh, June twenty-seven to approve, uh, the budget by the board. Next slide, please. I'm pleased to inform you that we are submitting our budget with a positive certification. Next slide, please. Okay, so to jump in the state, uh, the state budget, we see obviously, uh, lots of upside, but there's also major risk to the budget uh, in the long-term forecast. So we're facing significant, uh, impact, uh, on the budget, a turbulent situation. The stock, uh, fell into a bear market and there seemed to be like a recession is looming. Uh, the factors that impact the state budget is unfollowed. Obviously, the inflation and, and the impact of it. Uh, and it's good slow, uh, uh, the GDP and the Federal Reserve, uh, making adjustments soon to increase the interest rate. The supply chain is a bottleneck and the challenges that we're facing that would add, uh, expenditures. Uh, obviously, the stock market now is in a bear, is a bear market and, uh, that provide uncertain risk to the economy. And then finally, you have the war between Russia and Ukraine and the impact on, uh, uh, on the stability of the econ, the international economy, especially on the price of gas and obviously impacting, uh, impacting everything else. Next slide, please. This is actually what show, uh, volatile, uh, state funding sources. The main one is the capital gains. As you can see through the years, uh, the, it fluctuates significantly. And this is important because if the, if the capital gain is an, is over eight percent of the, uh, of the total revenue for the state, it triggers, uh, it triggers the, the cap for, the reserve for the district as one of the four items that, uh, impact that. And next slide, please. This is the inflation for the last year and a half or so. And you can see how it's escalating to an average about eight and a half percent. Uh, prediction that it's going to continue for a while and probably settle into around nine percent before it goes down. Next slide, please. Uh, the, the minimum guarantee for the Proposition Ninety-eight seems to be flat for the, for this year compared to last year. But as you can see, if you look into the trend, you will see some dip in the middle there. That was the recession in, uh, ten years ago. And, uh, and that's basically showed the volatility of the Proposition Ninety-eight revenues. Next slide, please. This is actually show the difference between, uh, the governor's budget and, uh, the mayor's vision. And you can see the fluctuation that sometimes is substantial, so, uh, uh, generally, the Proposition Ninety-eight funding level reflects the, the large, uh, the larger economic situations. And, uh, uh, it's, it's really, uh, showing in the last few years the variance between the governor's initial budget and the mayor's vision. That didn't happen prior to this, the governor, Governor Brown timeline. Next slide, please. So Proposition Ninety-eight Reserve, uh, it requires the state to deposit funds into the public school system if all of these factors are met. Maintenance factor, test one, ADN COLA, as well as the capital gain of over exceeding eight percent of general fund revenue and all of these factors have been met. Next slide, please. Uh, that is triggering the cap, the ten percent reserve maximum. And this was established in two thousand seventeen. Initially, the, the, the cap was established earlier for twice as, uh, twice the minimum, uh, requirement and for our district is three percent. But this is actually, uh, I no longer see the, okay, thank you. Uh, this is actually a ten percent using the unassigned, assigned and assigned ending balance of general fund, a special reserve for, uh, funds other than capital outlay fund. Next slide, please. Uh, because of what we call the David, that COVID bump, uh, we see how the reserve, the average reserve for school districts have increased in the last year or so. And mainly because it's, you know, expenditures did not materialize. In the high school district, the average increased from seventeen percent to almost twenty-two percent. Uh, in, in the state, our district is averaging about twenty-four to twenty-five percent. We're a little bit over the average of the reserve, uh, for the state, for the high school district. You also can see that, oh, every, every, uh, district groups have increased in, in, almost in the same, in the same fashion. Next slide, please. So factors impacting statewide average reserve. Uh, if you recall, uh, two years ago when COVID started, there was a threat to reduce the school funding by ten percent. There is also the closure resulting in less spending. You know, uh, school district did not fill vacancies, utilities, transportation and many other expenditures as well. Uh, and then you have the one-time funding, uh, restricted funding that is, uh, used to complement and replace the current expenditures. And this expectation, obviously, that these, uh, these are largely one-time in nature and it will, uh, and it will end when we get back to a full return in person in twenty twenty, twenty-three. Next slide, please. This is actually all the fund dollars that the state received, the one-time, uh, funds for COVID. Next slide, please. And these are the deadlines for, uh, spending those, uh, funds for school districts. And you can see that it fluctuate, it, it actually some are, are ending is this fiscal year, some ending next fiscal year. And, uh, some ending in September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. This is actually a breakdown of how much the district is getting with some of these funds. Uh, and you can see the amount of dollars allocated to the district. This doesn't mean that the district is having this fund right now. This means that the district is allocated those funds and we receive funds based on, as reimbursement or allocation, uh, on, on annual basis. So, so, uh, we do include it in our budget, but that doesn't mean that we have this amount of dollars at this point in time. But these are allocated for our district. Next slide, please. And the message that we would like to share is that even though we do have plans for all these type of funds, uh, the recommendation is to spend the most restrictive first and those who are expiring sooner. So, you know, this, as I believe Larry was talking about, uh, 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 you know, we have the opportunity to revise the plans and adjust it accordingly in order to make sure that we're spending all these one-time funds. Next slide, please. So consideration and perspective for our district budget, uh, we have to take in consideration, obviously, the declining enrollment. Uh, and we do have steep declining enrollment due to COVID and we'll discuss that later on. Uh, emergency funding timeline, these are the timelines that I shared with you a few slides ago. Uh, and then the personnel expenditures, uh, as, and one time, and one-time emergency funding. And then the operating cost obviously is covered by the increase in COLA, the six point five six percent for, uh, for, uh, next year as, uh, proposed by the governor. Next slide, please. Okay, so, uh, moving into, uh, some of the expenditures that we are going to be facing next year. As you can see, the culprits contribution is increasing from this year. It was twenty-two point nine one percent and next year is increasing to twenty-five point three seven percent. An increase of two point four six percent. That's increase in the total gross, uh, uh, compensation, uh, salaries, I'm sorry, for all culprits employees. Okay, that's employer contribution. So, uh, it, it is, it has a major impact on the district as this obviously will be coming from the, from the COLA. Uh, this, the governor is not proposing any, uh, one-time dollars that would be put into these uh, systems to offset the increase in that contribution, employer contribution. Next slide, please. This is the cultures, it's the same, same situation. It's increasing from this year, this year is sixteen point nine percent. Next year is going up to nineteen point one percent. I just to put it in numbers, uh, I mean, you know, that two point, uh, two point, uh, uh, two increase in the total salaries for employees that the employer is covering costs the district about million and a half dollar every year. Additional million of dollar, million and a half dollar every year. Recommendation from school services is to, uh, uh, propose and budget for nineteen point one percent for this year and the following years. Next slide, please. Okay, so the COLA factor, uh, you know, you wanted to also see what the impact of the declining enrollment in the school, in the school district. So you have a district one, uh, that has no enrollment change and a district two that have two and a half percent decline. If you can press again, you will see what the, uh, what the numbers are. Okay, so in the case of, uh, the, the district one, the district, that district is, uh, receiving the six point five six percent increase on their total LC, LCFF dollars. Okay, however, in the district that is declining, the total revenue that they are receiving as a percentage of the LCFF dollars is only equating to three point eight nine percent. So you can see the impact of the decline enrollment and the overall, and the overall impact of that on how much additional dollars that the school district is receiving for LCFF. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. Uh, and that's what they called the ADA cliff, you know, as you recall, because of the, because COVID nineteen, the impact on the decline enrollment for many school district in the state of California have been very extensive. Uh, estimated to lose, uh, the state of California is losing about two hundred and seventy thousand children over the two years. Uh, so, uh, you know, uh, and the impact, uh, that, the rate of which the children are attending school is also another decline. So, next slide, please. In this case, not only the enroll, the enrollment is declining, it's also the ADA is also, uh, declining. For this year, for example, we have students who did not attend school during the days when they have COVID and that's obviously impacting, impacting the district. I'm pleased to find, to, to see that the governor is addressing this year or next year. Uh, uh, this year, uh, decline in ADA by, by basically giving us a waiver in that regard. So, uh, you can see what, and with, with the existing current law, law is a school district declining, uh, by ADA, the ADA by one thousand, with the governor proposal average, it's actually, they can, uh, 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 ask for nine, ninety-eight forty-one, uh, students. So we're pleased that, that this at least is addressed for next year if it's still in the, in the, in the final budget. Next year, next slide, please. This is the decline enrollment in our district. And I know it's a small numbers here, but the reality is, is that it's projected that the district is going to be declining on average by three point four percent every year. We used to be declining before the COVID by two point two percent every year. Uh, and that's obviously a steep increase in the decline enrollment. We anticipate that by twenty-five, twenty-six, the district, uh, total enrollment is gonna be around seven thousand. So, uh, we have to obviously include that in our, uh, projection in the future years. Next slide, please. This is the ADA relief that I talked about and it shows that without the relief, a school district like us will probably be declining by about five percent in ADA for this year with the relief that we can use the two thousand nineteen, twenty, uh, uh, ADA numbers. So it base, and then after that in twenty twenty, twenty-three, the numbers go back to, uh, normal. So we have a relief for one year. Next slide, please. This is, uh, something that we have to worry about, uh, you know, a, a very old law, over a hundred years old, I believe, that requires school districts to spend a per, a percentage of their, uh, rev, uh, expenditures on end classroom, direct classroom. And they define the direct classroom as teachers in the classrooms and very educators. Anything else outside of that are not accounted for. There are certain categorical programs and types of costs are excluded from the calculations and salary and benefit within the general fund are used. So for our, for this high school district, it's fifty percent. And you can see the numbers for elementary and unified school district. Uh, can, next slide, please. So because of the one-time fund, uh, the number of school district that do not meet the CAA, uh, requirement is incre, is an increase. Even though high school district, the, uh, uh, you know, only ten percent of the high school districts have not met the CAA last year, but you can see that the number is increasing. And for elementary school districts, it's actually reaching to about fifty percent of all elementary school district that are not reaching that goal. So what does this mean? So next slide, please. So when a school district does not meet that goal, they have to file for exemption with, uh, uh, the, uh, the county. Uh, and the county will be withholding, uh, the difference in the amount between the fifty percent and the amount that is, uh, calculated to be less than fifty percent. And, uh, based on, uh, based on the exemption that show that, uh, that district has a comparable teacher salaries and compensation, uh, it, the COE may approve or not approve, uh, the, the waiver. And, uh, technically, a school district may be, uh, uh, may have to, uh, withhold, some, some of their revenues maybe was held because of the CAA. We always look at that number and we wanted to make sure that we are at least meeting the minimum of fifty percent. Next slide, please. This is switching to multi-year projection. Excuse me. Uh, what multi-year projection is all about, it's about, uh, standard economic assumptions, a decision that have been already made that will be impacting in the future and locally calculated data point estimate. Multi-year projection is not predictions or forecasts. It's not a crystal ball which basically say that, you know, we, in two, three years, we behave these numbers. And it's also not a measuring stick for how wrong we are. It's that, it's basically projection based on certain assumptions that we do based on, uh, the economic assumption and standards that we have, that we see around us. Whether they materialize or not, I mean, that's another thing. So it's very difficult to, uh, to project what's gonna happen in the next two years with all of the changes that will take, will take place. You can see that even the governor budget from January to May to June, they actually fluctuate significantly. Next slide, please. So the, uh, the Department of Finance actually estimate the, the COLA. And you can see that the COLA is changing from January to May. And, uh, so from the January, uh, 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 governor proposal to May, uh, revision, you can see that the number increased, obviously, because of the cost of inflation is increasing. I do not, I, I do not doubt that these numbers may be adjusted, uh, up and then after that, it's probably gonna go down with, after the inflation is, is managed. But this, these are the numbers that we are using. But this are, these are the numbers that we are using in our budget to determine how much the revenue will be this next year and the future years. Next slide please. So the impact on uh multi-year projections, uh obviously the positive, you know, uh LCFF increase uh in the funding, increase categorical funds with the cola. And sometimes those cola do not materialize for categorical fund, uh one-time federal funds, one-time state funds. Uh the negatives include increase in the cost of goods and services, the increase in the in the cost of stairs and bears as we discussed before. And then this is a big one, it's with the one-time money when you have those new hires. I know that we sometimes basically say that this is contingent on funding availability and so forth. But when you hire with one-time fund, you might, you may have to deal with issues about how to keep those new hire and new programs going after these funds expired. And then obviously additional cost to mitigate the learning loss. Next slide please. This is just quickly here to just let you know that the governor did not address any increase in special education other than the cola, six point five six percent. Next slide please. Child nutrition, the governor is proposing to uh uh ensure that all students receive two meals a day and he's putting uh certain amount of dollars to cover that. So we're pleased that he is doing so, uh but it may have some challenges later on and we'll talk about that when we're moving forward. Next slide please. For the facilities program, and this is actually one of the items that were, you know, the there are many items in in which the legislators who approved a placeholder budget in the last two days may actually change or and there is negotiation right now going on between the governor and the and the uh legislators. So we're not really sure how these programs is gonna materialize. But the governor is is recognizing that uh the state bond dollars are no longer there. Uh and he's putting some dollars from uh the state budget uh to cover some of the projects that are, is our modernization or construction, uh new construction that that covers the state contribution. This is actually a good thing for us, it materializes as we are moving forward with our uh with our uh modernization projects and we do have eligibility for state funding. If this materializes, we may be able to get money sooner than later. Uh so that's actually a good thing and we're monitoring how this will end. Next slide please. Deferred maintenance, the governor is proposing to allocate one point seven billion dollars one time for deferred maintenance. We're really happy to see that the governor is realizing that uh eliminating the deferred maintenance uh many years ago uh at the time when the LCFF was int- introduced was not really a good thing for a school district. It's just basically kick the can down the road. Our district never really eliminated the deferred maintenance uh fund and allocated certain dollars in there, realizing the importance of maintaining our facilities at least to a minimum standard. So you can see here what the governor is doing, but obviously this is another one of another say, another program that the legislators may have a different opinion over. Next slide please. Facilities, these are the allocation dollars from May revision and you can see the assembly and the senate. Before they reach into agreement, both of them, they had this uh this uh in mind to for facilities. Next slide please. Same situation for transportation. Uh as you may be aware, transportation dollars have never changed from nineteen seventy-nine. Uh so if school district have transportation allocation in nineteen seventy-nine, they will be receiving that same exact amount of dollars this year. It never increased by cola, it never increased by the need of services. It just basically the transportation program was kind of suspended since nineteen seventy-nine. Uh we see some movement in trying to fund uh school transportation specifically in the in the with, as they are introducing the TK program. Uh and we're obviously monitoring this as well, but you can see the difference between the governor and the assembly and the senate in that regard. Next slide please. What's included in the main revision all are all of these programs, some of these programs are basically repeat and some remain uh mostly unchanged. Uh you know, uh one of the program that is of interest obviously is the green buses. Uh one and a half billion dollars, I believe this one of the item that legislators are discussing to revise revise or reach into a different agreement with the governor. Next slide please. So what's not in the main revision is actually as very important. Uh there is no pension relief like having the years before. Uh the transportation funding remains uh the same as it was used before. No increase in cola or anything like that. So uh there is no relief when it comes to transportation. And then while it's a good thing to have uh for the governor to uh to uh fund uh students to have two meals, this could have, could highly likely impact the unduplicated count or the free and reduced numbers. And by in turn could be impacting uh district allocations for uh free and uh free and reduced and S and C dollars. So because there will be no incentive forbearance to complete uh the documents that would uh let the the stu- there's there's children to be eligible for free uh free meals or reduced meals. So this is obviously something that will be monitored. Next slide please. Uh this is some of the mandated uh that going program that going in effect by July first, twenty twenty-two. One of them obviously is the late start time, that's impacting our district. Uh another one is the universal meals, but then there are other programs as you can see here, those are the men- mandated fi- uh programs. Next slide please. So what we are assuming for our budget is basically all of these items. Uh that cola obviously and the step and column. The step and column for certificated is about one and a half percent increase every year and for classified is about one point two five percent every year. Uh the declining enrollment will take that in consideration. We do not have revenue for contingent or speculative ni- speculative nature. So if the governor and the legislators are still going over some of the allocation of dollars, the one-time and all of this stuff, you know, we really do not include that in the budget at this point in time because there is, we're not really sure how this will materialize. We obviously make sure that we have cash flow to ensure that we have month-to-month balance to meet our obligations. Uh multi-year projections for customers and culpers. Uh we also uh include escalation factors for utilities and obviously we are anticipating higher percentage this year. Benefits and risk management also, cost of SAM and cyber liability insurance. This is going over, you know, o- over the roof because of the nature of the claims and the cost of these claims. And then also fund transfers out to fund fourteen and fund twenty-one as indicated in there. Uh some fund, fund fourteen deferred maintenance and fund twenty-one is allocation of dollars that we pay for the crib payment. But we do get obviously a reduction in the cost of utilities because of the solar uh program that we have. Next slide please. That's continuing the assumption uh for next year, the S and C is projected to be thirty-five million plus. Uh funding to address the need for unduplicated count people which include English learner, free and reduced price and uh and uh via the professionalism calculation, this step and column increase as we indicated. Uh contribution uh adjustment for culbers and culsters as as uh recommended in the governor uh budget. And contribution of a three percent minimum from general fund for routine maintenance. This is a requirement that we have to meet. And obviously mandated block of uh the certain amount that you have here, sixty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents for all the mandated block grants. Next slide please. So to basically look into all of the factors that we have for our budget for for the next three years, these are the basically the assumptions that we have. It just put in the table for for you that including as well our funded ADA and and the applied capable count percentage that we have. Next slide please. This is just as um uh comes from the executive summary that show the uh allocate the the revenues uh by category. And as you, as you can see, the bulk of it is LCFF, but you have all of the other funds that we receiving next year. Next slide please. Expenses, uh the combination of certificated salaries, classified salaries and employee benefits i- is about eighty percent of the total buy. It's actually a little bit less than than eighty percent because of the one-time money this year, next year. So with the one-time money as a, as a whole, the revenue is increasing. Uh and the the salaries, uh we're not adding many positions in the same manner. So basically, the percentage is slightly going below eighty percent. Next slide please. These are obviously revenue in dollars and you can see LCFF is total is one hundred and twenty-four million. Uh you also can see a high amount in the federal revenues for next year, thirty million. And the total revenues estimated in our budget to be over hundred and seventy-three million for next year, mainly because of the federal revenue increase. Next slide please. Uh that's actually the expenditure side, you can see the breakdown of the certificated salary, classified salaries, benefits, uh book and supplies and ser- and and other operating ca- uh costs. And you can see on the, in the bottom there uh the estimated amount or the difference between the expenses and the revenues for uh next year for unrestricted, restricted and total. And the ending balance anticipated to be by uh June series of next year for unrestricted, restricted and total. Next slide please. This is a multi-year uh numbers reflecting uh the revenues that we estimate, estimate for the following, for the next year and the following two years. Uh the expenses as we stated, uh broken down by certificated, classified employee benefits, books and supplies and services. And then you have uh the transfers as well as contribution. And contribution are mainly to two things. Uh contribution to special education program and transportation for special education. Those are the two uh uh co- uh two significant contributions that we have from general fund. And it's totaling around fourteen million dollar every year at this point in time. And you can see the ending balance, the beginning balance and ending balance for all the three years as projected. Next slide please. All right, so we have to uh um uh maintain at uh no more than ten percent of the reserve. But the state allows the district to commit funds, uh the additional uh fund over the ten percent to certain categories. You can see it here, you can also contribute to restricted programs. Uh you can uh transfer to other funds as needed in order to cover the obligation for uh for the district. And so you can see that school districts do have the opportunity and ability to uh to uh to do all of that. The main reason that it is important to maintain still a high reserve, even if it's transferred or contributed or committed, uh the main reason for that is that after a certain point, if it's low, you really ha- end up having cash flow issues. Uh so it is important that the district maintain uh 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 an amount of dollars that uh allow us to be able to cover our year, uh month-to-month uh ongoing expenses. Okay, next slide. And this is what we asking the board to approve, uh or you know, to commit the dollars. And uh you know, some of the dollars is to be committed uh uh or transferred to deferred maintenance. Uh some dollars is are for uh the special reserve for the post-employment benefits. So the district has a very high expensive, long-term obligation in the in the special, in the in post-employment. It basically, if you assume that all employees who are eligible if they retire uh uh and how much the cost of post-employment benefits till sixty-five, you know, we have, I believe at the last time I did look into it is some in excess of thirty million dollars. So we are committing some of these dollars to that, to that fund to ensure that the long-term, long-term obligation is covered. For the facilities fund, as I mentioned, we are embarking on modernization projects that will include contribution from the state, matching funds. However, the dollars are not received on time. Uh sometimes it takes a year or two to get the fund from the state, you probably can finish the project before you actually receive the fund. So where are you gonna get the fund? Okay, you either get the fund from uh from the bond for an uncovered project that could be done in the future. So you slow down the these projects or you allocate dollars and spend it. And then when the the money is received from from the state, it can go back to general fund. And assigned dollars are basically the minimum uh ten percent. The reserve for economic uncertainty is is a three percent. Okay, so actually the sign is the difference between the three and ten percent, so it's a seven percent. And then the reserve for economic uncertainty is a three percent. And you can see it for the fu- future years as well. Next slide. Other funds, kind of briefly to go through it, I mean, we're in good shape with adult education fund. Uh pretty much all of the funds are in good shape. Uh the cafeteria special uh fund, um we are estimating that we'll spend about the same amount of dollars. Uh you know, it's kind of for the lack of understanding how the, how the impact on on the school district with uh with the reimbursement and also with the change in the alternate uh 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 method for collecting the fund. Uh the building fund, the assumption here is that we're spending a significant amount of dollars for uh for next year. That may not materialize, but you know, we have some encumbrances and some project that will be, big project that will be starting next year. And the next slide please. That's it, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Altar, for your short presentation. Um I'm gonna start.
Mr. Altar, can you hear us? Are you able to hear us now? Okay, we're gonna continue to work on that, but can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you through the phone, doctor's radio.
Okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna start to my right, Mrs. Torres, if you have questions.
Yes.
Maybe I could pass him the phone or something.
You can turn your microphone there, love.
And I am very, very proud of you doing this hard work for our students to get as much as we can. But I have a question about this. We know that it's risky and that we have probably a biggest problems and we are going to lose some money. Do we have another plan? Do we have, have we already prepared another plan for saving uh as much as we can in order to not to have a very bad uh um this balance in our, in in our program? Do we have a second, a second plan? Because this is the first plan, but what about? Do we have a second, a second plan? Because this is the first plan. But what about? Do we have a second one? Uh, for any moment that we feel that is starting to be really uh, very hard?
Well, the the, I'm assuming that your question is related to in case of the state goes into. Uh, recession or the country goes into recession and there will be substantial reduction in the revenues giving to the school district. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's that's my, that's my question.
And that's and that's highly likely, by the way, with the situation that we're facing right now. Uh, and the reduction in the potentially capital gain. Uh, that the state will be receiving as well as entering into a recession. And the stock market and all of that and you know. Uh, the answer is that the state, there are two parts to this answer. There is. You know, the state basically established a reserve for school districts.
Yes.
I believe it's about ten billion dollars uh, to be used in case if you have. If you have a down downside in the revenues as we describing.
Oh, good.
The challenge with this one is that it's not sufficient.
Yes.
To address uh, potential large recession. Okay. It's gonna be relying on the school district uh, reserve. And the commitment that we have and the contribution that we have. And what is, we need to be aware of is that these commitments are. Are committed, but they are still can be used by district board back into the general fund. Okay, so that provide the ability for the board to address. Uh, uh, a slowdown in the economy and the slowdown in the revenue. And give the district and the board a freezer to. For the following year to make some adjustment like reduction in expenditures and staffing. And so forth in order to adjust to the situation that we're facing. There is no question that. With the declining enrollment that the district is facing, three and a half percent or so every year. We really have to start looking into staffing and staffing ratios. And uh, you know, because we cannot perform as a district. Assuming that we are still ten thousand students when we are declining to seven thousand students. So. My suggestion is to start looking into what is the proper staffing levels. And what are the minimum expenditures that we can, we can do? And what are the expenditures that may have to be suspended in case if we get into that situation?
That is.
Accordingly, and hopefully we'll be able to uh, move out of that that cycle as. As the school district here did back in two thousand eleven and twelve.
Yes, yes. Okay, now, yeah, you answer my question. And then we have to be very, very, very careful, very careful with this. Thank you very much. Very, very interesting. Thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
So we're gonna hold the phone and talking to the mic. So I'm gonna pass the phone to you all. Maybe Mr. Beones, I'll allow you to go next. No questions or comments. Mr. Padilla.
Yes, Mr. Altar. Uh, my question is the following. I I want some clarification on the projected enrollment. It shows here that for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Where we will have a projected enrollment of eight thousand one hundred seventeen students. Now, I know that throughout California, you know, many of our districts in the Southern California area. Have been decli- suffering from declining enrollment. Can you talk a little bit about? What is the divisor that we use in El Monte Union High School District? I've always known it to be twenty-nine point five. And the twenty-nine point five comes out of the total enrollment that we have and. Clarify that we do not include our school counselors in that count. This is strictly teachers. So. Can you talk about that divisor? Uh, is it still twenty-nine point five? Uh, because because I know that if I'm watching this meeting and I'm a teacher and we've been talking about declining enrollment. You know, the twenty-nine point five divided by the total number of students that we have will determine how many teachers. Uh, we have. And so talk about that divisor and what it includes and what it does not include when it comes to. Uh, projected enrollment of students and teachers that we will need to satisfy our need as a district.
Okay, sure. That 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 the divisor that we use does do not include any, any other certificated. Uh, staff like counselors or psychologists or nurses or librarian. Unless they actually provide uh, classroom instruction. Okay? And uh, you know, so that number is really more focused on the teacher. Uh, on the number of teachers. So, but then there are more than one number. Okay, the first number is. Thirty-one to one ratio that is provided by the general fund unrestricted. Uh, outside of the SNC. And then with the SNC dollars, there are more money paid to reduce that. Uh, that that number to I believe twenty-nine and a half and maybe even less than that because there are also some specialty teachers. That we also add like Avid or other other teachers as well. At the end of the day. The district currently is averaging about twenty-five to one ratio.
Yeah, but I don't wanna talk about an average. I wanna talk about how how do we fund and determine the number of teachers so that we don't murky the waters? Is it still twenty-nine point five or is it not?
Uh, it's it's twenty-nine and a half. Uh, 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 students to one teacher with the SNC funding. Uh, Mr. Cecil, do you have any?
Yeah, I have.
Any.
Time out. You gotta talk to the cell phone and turn on your mic. So let me give you the phone. Alright. Did I turn this one off? Okay. So basically, right now, this year, um, as we build for next year, I have next year's done. But this year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we just finished. Um, we fund out of the general fund. Uh, we fund thirty-one to one. Throughout the district, that's two hundred thirty-two classroom teachers. This does not, does not include special education teachers. These are general ed teachers. So we fund two hundred thirty-two. Um, then out of, we go down to a ratio of twenty-nine point five to one. So this year, we funded out of the SNC funds to get down to twenty-nine point five to one. That's additional thirteen teachers. Okay, so on top of the two thirty-two, you add thirteen teachers. So that's a total of two hundred forty-five teachers right there. Okay? So then on top of that, we fund five teachers throughout the district at the five conference high school, one each. For the first five sections of Avid out of SNC. Then we fund APCTE for advanced placement to give additional teachers for advanced placement CTE. Uh, we included five additional teachers, one at each site to cover those. Then on top of that, we have five elective teachers that we provide throughout the district, one at each site. So that's five more. So a total of fifteen out of that. Okay? Um, then we add sections, for instance, a college and career prep, math sections, English one, trans labs. And that include but one point four zero teachers throughout the district. Depends what T schools had those. And I shared this with, before I could share it again on Friday. So basically what we have out of there, this is our SNC funds. Um, out of SNC. We include an extra twenty-five point four zero teachers on top of the extra thirteen teachers for a twenty-nine point five to one. So that's all paid out of the SNC. Then we got categorical funding. Title one covers a um, sections of Avid. Uh, so we have three point eight throughout the district. It's title one for Avid additional. And English one, trans intensive, that's another two point two zero. So the total teacher allocation unrestricted, restricted is two hundred eighty-two. And current FTE is two hundred eighty-eight as of this last year. District wide, we were over six point five eight teachers beyond that.
Right.
So we, we fund a lot of teachers out of our SNC and title one that go beyond, that really lower that. Teacher ratio thirty-one to one. I shared with you last week on the average class size throughout the district, we're right about twenty-five. You saw the memo. That I shared with you guys. You can see every department, every school kind of goes up and down. But I think district wide, we're about twenty-five, twenty-six to one.
I wanna add to that, that um, one of the important factors because of the pandemic. And the hardships that the pandemic has brought on all of our families and all of our employees is that we have yet to make any reductions in staffing. When it comes to layoffs, when it comes to that. So that needs to be clear and really, uh, uh, it it's supportive of the board that. Through the Al Cap plan, we're able to sustain even the current staffing, though the staffing ratio thirty-one to to one, which is our general funded staffing. Um, is much slower as Mr. Cecil mentioned, as a result of supplemental concentration fund. That includes a reduction to twenty-nine point five. And that's on our plan. In addition to that, he mentions the title one funding, the federal funds as well. And also the temporary staffing that we currently have to respond to the pandemic and the learning loss. So we have kept everyone intact as far as our teachers. Granted that you have retirees. Granted that people. Uh, leave for whatever reason, you know, they 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 like to retire or they leave for whatever purpose, relocate. That we tried to go through attrition where if they leave, if we can fulfill not filling that position, then we met our goal of staffing. So we're doing our very best to support everyone when it comes to that and retaining jobs. But that cannot be sustainable in the future as you've seen in the budget and the forecast that we've seen. Uh, over the next couple of years to school services. So I think Mr. Altar did a good job by explaining that in that lengthy presentation. But it's important that we spend this time this evening to go through that annually as we prepare for the new adoption and look at the forecast for the next couple of years. So hopefully that would help understand about this, how we fund and why we fund, for what purpose.
And just to be clear, it's so when you have thirty-one to one, so that's two hundred eighty-eight students. Alright, our two hundred thirty-two teachers that we fund. And you add the extra teachers in, that's a difference of fifty-six teachers that are funded out of not general funds but SNC and title one.
Right.
So that's the additional teachers we provide the the students to lower the class sizes.
So, yeah, I I wanna finish. That you kind of, that's where I was alluding to and that's why I brought up the subject. So. So so just to be clear, if I'm back at home and I'm a teacher and I'm watching this meeting. Um, I I want the record to show that this this, our district has been very. Uh, our board has been very supportive of trying to not use the L word in this district, which is layoffs. And. Right now, by listening to Mr. Cecil, we can see how creative and how we have used every fun. Possible that we have to make sure that, you know, we keep the those class sizes lowered and that we don't lay off teachers. I mean, that is a very serious thing when I'm looking at this and I'm an educator and I say it all the time. This is my thirtieth year. I don't want anybody to be laid off. But it is one of those things that we need to maintain a district that stays, you know, fiscally solvent. So um, I I just wanna be clear that. You know, we do what we can with the money that we have and we have tried everything. Um, I I also would like Mr. Cecil to talk about. The early college academy. How does that play into? And I know we don't have early college academy at all the sites. But we do have early college academy at um, uh, South El Monte High School. And there. Uh, our students go with teachers that are provided through Rio Honda College with the textbooks that are provided for Rio Honda College. Um, but do we do anything different in terms of that twenty-nine point five of South El Monte? Because if the kids are going to other teachers, right? And I support early college academy and it's a great program and we just graduated. The first class that attended early college academy for four years and it was a great success. How does that affect the teacher ratio specifically at that school? Like, what formula do we use there?
We use the same formula at all our schools regardless. And early college academy, what it helps the school to do is. When a school has, say, a third period early college academy class, which is a teacher from Rio Honda College on the campus of El Monte teaching the class. We do not fund South El Monte any different when it comes to teacher ratios than any other school.
Got it.
So regardless of how many college classes each one of our school has, they're still funded the same.
Got it. I I just wanna be clear because I I sometimes that question does come, that question comes up. And everybody has a different answer to the same question. So I wanted it to come from the source, which is the board and which is you and which is Mr. Altar. That is the formula that we that we try to use, the twenty-nine point five. But we've gotten creative by using all the different funds that we have that are awarded to us from the state, from the feds. And you said the number is six point five. If this board did not want to be supportive of our teachers, six point five teachers would have been laid off. Is that correct or not correct?
Well, I I would hope we never lay teachers off, but right now.
Correct, but you're saying that currently we are funding six point five uh, teachers.
We are over six point five eight teachers district wide this last year.
Right.
So some schools were over by two point eight two teachers. Uh, one school is three point one two and one school is one point one one teachers.
So what does that mean? We're over all that? What does that mean?
They're, they have an extra teacher and when you figure out the allotment, at the end of the day, teacher overage is what we look at, what teachers are over.
So we're six point five over staff. Is that what you're saying? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to say that.
Yes.
We have kept six point five teachers employed here and we've gotten very creative and I'm glad that we have done that. No further questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I'm good. I'm good, yeah. Just tell Mr. Altar good night, to feel well, to feel better, to recover.
Altar, take you.
Yeah, take care of his family.
The, how how can I stay for the consent and regularity in case of uh?
Um, you will, you will be on standby on call. So what you can do is we can keep you on here if you'd like. Uh, but most likely it's best if we just go to the agenda and then we will contact you by phone. If you, if we have any questions, okay? That work for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bye-bye.
I think we can let the, let him rest, you know, just, yeah, just text him. I mean, if we have any questions, we should just follow, you know, we're gonna have a meeting on Monday. The twenty-seven, so you know, we'll have it resolved then. I mean. He's already not feeling well. He's did a great job with the presentation, so. Um, okay, uh, moving on to.
Excuse me, go ahead and exit out, close up the Google and I'll text him to go ahead and log out.
Yeah, we'll have some rest, Mr. Altar. Uh, moving on to item D, which is oral written communication, starting with a public hearing, notice of public hearing on local control. And accountability plan and district budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and the reserves in excess of minimum reserve requirement. Uh, so with that, I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
Well, you can see Vice President Diaz, there's no one here in attendance, at least in present. Uh, we did not receive any inquiries regarding the budget during public hearing open as we have released. The information to the public since last week as well. Uh, so at this time, there is no input or public comment related to the public hearing this evening.
Thank you. And with that, do I need a motion to close the public comment or can I just close the public comment?
We can close the public comment at this time.
Okay, I will go ahead and move to close the public comment. We get a second?
A second to close the public comment.
I'm sorry, the public hearing.
The public hearing for Al Cap, I'll second it.
Alright, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, that closes the public hearing. So next, moving on to superintendent announcement communications, Dr. Zuniga.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Diaz. Uh, I don't have the a formal presentation for you in essence that we focus on. Today, this budget as well as our Al Cap plan. I did wanna congratulate the class of twenty twenty-two. Um, and also I'm excited to know that a lot of these students who are on their way to their college and career pathway. Wanna wish them the best of luck. You've probably heard a lot of the good news during your ceremonies about who was accepted where and who's going where. Our solidatorians, our valedictorians, uh, individuals that we are impressed and we are proud of that are going to be future leaders of not only this community. But also of our nation. So I wish the class of twenty twenty-two well as they navigate through their journey. Uh, in adulthood and obviously in post-secondary plans too. Uh, we did start summer school Monday. So we are in week one of summer school. So far, so good. Uh, we have a pretty good size enrollment. So we're almost at over seventy percent enrolled. At all schools. Uh, some of the counselors were working as we're finalizing some of the late registers. Uh, for over the last two days. So we're hoping by today, that's all set in stone because five weeks of school come quick and we need to be in the classroom. So by today. I think that fulfills all of our students, even the ones that came in late for registration as well. And we will end July, uh, we will end on July fifteenth. So that concludes a. And we will end, we will end on July fifteenth, so that concludes five weeks of summer school, and then as we meet, meet, meet the mid-July date, we prepare for another school year. So we're anticipating our return of our counselors on August first, kind of pre-reg, uh, pre-registration for the fall, and then in the next two weeks after August, we're back in, we're back in twenty-two, twenty-three, opening the school year as well. So although we're excited for the class of twenty-twenty-two, we know that we can anticipate another challenging year as we transition, hopefully more closer to some sense of normalcy for our students on campuses, enjoying their experience at the high schools as well. And we are also excited to know that the students and staff will have the resources through our ELO, through our S R until twenty-twenty-four that we can support and provide as well. So I'm excited that, I know funding one-time is, is not the best approach, but one-time support and response to the pandemic as well. So we're gonna continue to work at that to make sure that we, we actually maximize those expenditures. I appreciate the board's advocacy for extending and pushing to extend those timelines, because we know that we could use that funding, but also with, with so much happening and also with shortage of staffing, hiring, that also backs up some timelines for us, too. And I want to thank Mr. Briones, too, and he was also advocating back in DC a couple months ago, calling us and letting us know, hey, what do we need here, what's the best, and where are we at with our plans, too, to let, to demonstrate that there is a voice in our local, you know, local school districts, even in DC, about the importance of possibly extending those deadlines for S R funding as well. So hopefully that works out, too. And overall, I just want to wish everyone a wonderful summer. We're gonna go dark in July, that's a time to rest, time to stay with your family as much as possible, re-energize, and come back for the first meetings in August, and we'll continue to work through the next year as well. So that's it, Vice President Diaz, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Zuniga. So with that, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and I'm gonna start on my right here. This is, uh, Ms. Alatouris Seegres, do you have any items that you'd like to hold?
No.
Thank you.
None.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Padilla?
None at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Briones?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to pull item thirty-nine to for a separate vote.
Okay. Can we move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item thirty-nine?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Briones, number thirty-nine.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to vote on this item separately. I won't be supporting this particular agenda item. I believe I'd shared this previously with the, another, uh, previous agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and another university. I, I can't support, uh, entering into agreements with universities that have Title IX waivers. Uh, Title IX is a federal law that requires, um, uh, schools that receive federal funding, in this case, universities, um, to have, uh, non-discrimination policies based on gender, sex, sexual orientation, religious, religious beliefs, and, uh, other tenants, and so I, I can't approve any, or I can't support any agreements between our district and any universities that have Title IX waivers that allow them to receive federal funding and discriminate against their students or members of their community. So I will be voting no on this item.
Do you want a motion to disapprove the item?
Well, you can ask for a motion, and then we take the vote.
Okay, I get a motion then.
I'll, I'll move to approve it, but, but as I say that, I, I believe that, you know, we, we do live in the United States of America, and I think that, you know, there's different beliefs, so I think that we need to be inclusive of everybody. And so there are, if there's some students that would like to choose that university and, or that want to come from there to, uh, you know, do their student teaching and school counseling placements here, being somebody who takes interns from the universities and everything, I don't want to punish those students, and then I don't want to punish some of the services that we get from those college students that come here to work with our own kids. So, um, I, I think it, it, it works both ways, you know, we're not always gonna make everybody happy, this is America, but I don't want to punish my students, because as a minority, I've always sat here, too, and said that we need equal access, you know, we need to have, we need to give those students that are graduating from La Sera access to work with our students here, and we need to allow our students to get those services, especially in a time where, you know, we're short-staffed and all this. I, I've got, over the thirty years, I've worked with a lot of interns from everywhere, from, you know, from USC, from Cal State LA, from Cal Poly Pomona, but that's my two cents. So I move to approve, uh, item thirty-nine.
Me, too. I approve, uh, I approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So we have, uh, moved to approve in a second, there's already been discussion, all those fate, all those members in favor, say aye.
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 All those against?
Nay.
Okay, so the item is approved, three to one. Onto the regular agenda, we have item number one, which is consider approval of the notice of completion for the Aurora High School roof repair and replacement project for the weight room bid number twenty-one dash twenty-two B three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of agreement between the El Monte High School District and Shed LLC to provide online service professional development events district-wide.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Any discussion?
No.
No, hearing none, all those members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three, consider award of RFP number twenty-two, twenty-three P two safety sanitation supply and service to food safety systems.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Consider award of informal bid number twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two B nine epoxy floor installation project at the South El Monte High School Kitchen to Diamond Crete Concrete Coatings, Inc., DBA, Osavito Builders.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you so much. Item number five, consider approval to enter into an agreement with Anaheim Group to provide inspector record services to support the school bus electric vehicle charging station project at Mount D High School.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, first and a second, any discussion?
Okay.
Hearing none, all those members in favor, say aye.
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 You. Item number six is consider approval of an annual subscription to Atkinson, Atkinson, Anderson, Loyah, Rudd, and Romo for public contract subscription service.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just quick discussion, this is just literature, right? This is a law firm, and usually, even if you're not their client, they've always been, they always provide us with.
Templates.
Templates. Now, is this for the students?
No, these are design templates to use through our procurement for bidding processes that require up-to-date laws, but they're actually templates that simplify the process when we bid.
Right, we get them all the time from them. We've, we always have as board members, even though we're not their clients, so are we paying for this?
Those are services they provide as far as the actual license for the templates that are used.
But how, how much is annual subscription?
It's just five thousand for the subscription. So you, you have a set of base contracts and construction documents specifically tailored for the use by school districts, and those are all aligned to architects, construction, management, inspection, special inspections, you tech, engineering.
Okay. All right, so I'm thinking more of a, a school law and, uh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
That's it, sorry.
Uh, all those members in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, motion approved. Number seven is consider approval to purchase from sole source supplier Client Educational Systems for the CNC Turing Certification Cart and Mechanical Fabrication Learning System.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is adult school, correct?
This is the one, no?
CNC?
I, I saw that.
Okay, all right, but it's a, it's the same program that, we have it at our adult school, the CNC machines?
We have used it as well.
Huh?
We have used it as well.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
All right, all those members in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, this is approved. Item number eight, consider approval of resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-one, twenty-two for Juneteenth Celebration Day, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This item is approved. Number nine, consider approval of resolution number fifty-six dash twenty-one, twenty-two, calling on the United States Congress to take action on gun violence.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, which at this point, I think, Mr. Briones, you wanted to comment on this one?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Diaz. Uh, I'd like to make a statement on this item. For far too long, our nation has turned a blind eye to gun violence. Since the Columbine High School massacre in Littleton, Colorado, on April twentieth, nineteen ninety-nine, where thirteen students were murdered and the two gunmen took their own lives, there have been three hundred and thirty-one school shootings in the United States. One hundred and eighty-five children, educators, and others have lost their lives to gun violence. The three deadliest school shootings have been at Virginia Tech University in two thousand and seven, where thirty-two students were murdered and the gunman took his own life. At Sandy Hook Elementary School in two thousand and twelve, where the gunman's mother, six educators, and twenty first graders were murdered, and the gunman took his own life. And now, on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas, nineteen students and two teachers were shot and killed, and seventeen other individuals were injured by a gunman. Gun manufacturers, the National Rifle Association, and their legislative enablers, have shifted the responsibility of gun safety from gun owners to the rest of society, in particular schools. Instead of addressing the epidemic of gun violence in America, we are told to quote, harden our schools because they are quote-unquote "soft targets." Using military jargon with respect to community spaces like schools has no basis in reality. Instead of making it harder for a person to acquire a firearm, our country has made it easier. Instead of implementing red flag laws to prevent somebody from acquiring a firearm who should not be able to, Congress has allowed assault weapons banned to expire. Americans are twenty-five times more likely to be killed with a gun than people in other developed countries. Americans make up only five percent of the world's population, yet we own forty-two percent of the world's guns. We can no longer bury our heads in the sand and pretend gun violence is a normal occurrence in America. We cannot pretend that gun violence only happens in other places, it can happen everywhere. And yesterday, tragically, this uniquely American experience, our epidemic of gun violence, came home to our very own community.
Yeah.
Yesterday, El Monte lost two of our own, Corporal Michael Paredes, a nineteen ninety-eight graduate of Aurora High School, and Officer Joseph Santana, two thousand and nine graduate of El Monte High School, to gun violence. Their senseless deaths should not be in vain. It is time that each of us demand action from our federal representatives to end gun violence in America. I respectfully ask my colleagues on the board tonight to adopt this resolution, calling on the United States Congress to take action on gun violence, so that no one else will have to suffer the pain and anguish when they receive that knock on their door from a detective or a police chaplain, informing them that their loved one is dead because of gun violence. And now, there are another American statistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briones. Without any further discussion or comments?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all those members in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Item is approved. Uh, item number ten, consider approval of declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those members in favor, say aye.
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 Item is approved. Number eleven is consider approval of amending the approval of reclassification of one classified confidential staff member to add the job description.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all those members, say aye.
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 All those members say aye, all those members in favor, say aye. Uh, number twelve is review, discuss, and revise the district's administrative regulation, fifty-one, twenty-six, awards, achievement, first reading, six fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Do we have any thoughts or comments, colleagues, on this first reading?
I have none.
None for me.
Okay. With that, we can just move on to the next item, right?
Yes.
Review, discuss, and revise the district's board policies and administrative regulations in the six thousand series first reading. Do we have any comments? Questions?
I have none.
No, I have none.
None for me.
None? Okay. So that will conclude our regular agenda items. Moving on to section G, board communication roundtable and closure of meeting. Uh, I'm gonna start here on my right to Mrs. Z, Ms. Alatouris Seegres.
Okay. Um, I was very happy to attend to the three ceremonies for the award ceremonies with the students. It was really very interesting, because, my goodness, with all the promise that we have, the COVID, uh, the students got, uh, really good awards, and it was very, very interesting. I was very happy to attend to these ones. And then, on the Memorial Day, uh, do you remember that we were invited to go to the ceremonies in Rosemead, El Monte, and also in South El Monte? I attend to these three, running from one, one, one place to another place, but it was very interesting, because El Monte Union High School District had a representative there, and they named the, the El Monte Union High School District and one representative celebrating, celebrating the memorial, Memorial Day. Our students from El Monte Union High School District, about twenty students, received the confirmation in Nativity Church on Tuesday, the thirty-first. It was very interesting to see that all the students that they were registered, they did it. Bonds Credit Union, um, has been really very nice to us, especially for the Women's Club, Business and Professional Women's Club, and also American Union Auxiliary. They gave us three of their days for the luncheon, and we, uh, the members of these associations, we served the lunch, and in, they gave us some money for, all the money is for, uh, El Monte Union High School District, and, um, some scholarships that we're going to give next year, especially the ones from, uh, Business and Professional Women's Club is going to be all the money for adult education. Uh, this past Saturday, I attend the PTA district seminar. The most important point that they did in this seminar was that, to try to increase the number of the members. Then, pretty soon, I'm going to bring the, your, your envelopes, and we would like you to support the PTA. I don't know, but we lost so many, many, they didn't tell us exactly how many members we lost, first district PTA, which is the first in California, and always had a lot of members. Well, with the pandemic, really, we were affected, but we are going to keep on going. Uh, next week, we start our program of Girl State. The only thing that I just got is to help us, because this is the first time that I'm going to be very involved. Our five delegates did a great job. One thing that I was so very proud in Rosemead High School graduation was that they put in the, in the, in the program, they put the name of the boy states and girl states. This is the first time that I see it, and I think it's a great idea, because this program is one of the best programs that we have, eh, for teaching the students about government. Mr. President, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Alatouris Seegres. Uh, Mr. Padilla?
Um, yes, I just, it is a sad day in, in, in El Monte. I just want to send my condolences to, to both of the families, to Corporal Paredes's family and his wife and, um, his children.
of the families, to Corporal Paredes's family, and his wife, and his children. It's a very, a lot of times, we talk about how, you know, hitting it close to home, not only did it hit close to home, it hit home, you know. And it was very sad for me as well, having known Joseph Santana. I had the opportunity to meet Joseph Santana when he was just about fifteen or sixteen years old. He attended Wilkerson School in the El Monte City School District, and then went on to El Monte High School, which is when I got to interact with him. It was during my years at New Lexington School, and through Lisa Ton, who's one of our counselors now at the adult school, at the time, she was the summer youth employment coordinator through a program. And Joseph got placed at New Lexington School, and he was an amazing young man, just such a polite, respectful young man that got raised by his mother, and she did an amazing job with him. It's that student or that child that does everything the right way. He wanted to succeed, he wanted to do well in our community, and I'm just sad in that gun violence did take, it did take his life. You know, I give my condolences also to his dear wife Sasha Santana, to his daughter Jade, nine years of age, and to his two twins Joshua and Jacob, of two years of age. Also, my condolences to Joseph's mother, Ms. Olga Garcia, and stepfather Joe Garcia, who also happens to be our school resource officer at Almani High School, and who has done a phenomenal job for so many years in working with our students. And also to Joseph's father, Mr. Joseph Santana, whom I know that he had a very good relationship with. Also to Joseph's sisters, he had two sisters, Jessica Santana and Bianca Santana. And also to Sasha's mother, you know, or Joseph's mother, La Miss Lupe Pinedo. And also to my colleague at, in Almani City School District, whom I work with, Ms. Belinda Valenzuela, and who Sasha is her niece. I know the family's hurting, but I just want the family to know that we hold them in our prayers. And I just spoke more about Joseph Santana, because he's the one that I had more interaction with. As a child welfare person, on February twenty-third, I went out to a home where I asked for some assistance from Officer Quintana, who's our school resource officer in El Monte. And when they came out to the home, one of our trailer parks, I met Officer Quintana there, and when he showed up, my former student, Joseph, showed up in full uniform, and I was so proud to see him, because he looked so sharp, and we took some pictures there. And I just could, I was in disbelief when I tried coming home and all the streets were closed off. But I want you to know that he was an amazing young kid, so polite, so respectful, you know, a man of integrity, but yet a kid at heart. You know, he would just love to play with kids. And I got to know him also because of a former student that I worked with for many years by the name of Gabriel Colio. They were neighbors and just childhood friends. And I just can't say enough good things about Joseph. I am so sorry. I want to say that to the family, and I just want them to know that we're here for support, and I know that I speak for all of my colleagues, that whatever they need, please reach out. And I said this through a text to Joe Garcia, and Joe Garcia, very respectful man as well, sent me a picture and today, earlier today, and said, this is a picture of me and Joseph at the El Monte High School graduation, where my colleague, Mr. David Diaz, accepted the class. And what Joseph told his father was that, hey dad, when you're done, or you retire from El Monte High School, as being the SRO, I would like to one day be the SRO at Almani High School. And I texted back to Officer Garcia, and I said, you know, my condolences, I'm at a loss for words, and those of you that know me, I'm never at a loss for words. So my heart is with you, my condolences from the Padilla family, to Joseph's family, and I know also from our board. And also, for Corporal Paredes, I also send out condolences to Angie Paredes, who's also an employee with the Almani City School District. Angie, if you're watching, I'm so sorry. Please know that we hold you in our prayers, and that we're here for any help and support that you guys need. So that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And I will add that the City of El Monte has announced that this Saturday at seven PM, right here in front of City Hall, they will be hosting a candlelight vigil for the officers. And so, maybe that's a thing that we could also share, Dr. Zuniga, with our Almani High School District community. And in addition, they've also released an official fundraiser for the families of the officers, with the goal of raising two hundred thousand dollars. So if we could also share that with our Almani High School District community, I think that would, you know, it's the least that we can do. So. Mr. Breones?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just a couple items. One, I wanted to wish congratulations to our colleague at the Almani City School District Board of Education, formerly Ms. Lizette Mendez, now Ms. Lizette Garcia, on her wedding that took place on Monday. Just congratulations to her. And then echoing Dr. Zuniga's comments earlier today, just congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-two. I had the honor of accepting the class at Mountain View High School this year, and it was a very beautiful ceremony. It was wonderful to be in person again. And, you know, I look forward to hearing stories from our students of the amazing things they will, they are doing, and will be doing into the future. And just wanted to wish everyone a wonderful summer, and please be safe, look out for one another, and we'll be together soon again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, I mean, Mr. Breones. And for me, I think just in closing, with respect to some of the public comments that we received today, particularly with the culture over at Rosemead High School, I know, Dr. Zuniga, you've been, you know, communicating to us via the Friday memos on some of the things that are happening at Rosemead High School. And I'm wondering, as a next step, recommendation suggestion, maybe just meeting with the folks that came out today. I think it's Mr. Kong, Jason Kong, you know, which is a Rosemead High School alum, and kind of, you know, having that interaction or engagement, so that they can hear about what we're doing over at Rosemead High School, because I don't think our response has been to do nothing about it. And so, I think we would benefit from doing a little bit more communication, so that folks may know. So if that's feasible, I would appreciate that, because I know it goes just beyond the statement that we put out. There's onsite activities that are happening, so maybe we just need to communicate that more often. And yeah, I mean, I don't have any other items, other than really enjoyed the Almani High School graduation. They really lengthened it to make sure you savored every moment of it and remembered it. But, you know, the fireworks were great, you know, Larry, we were having fun. There's nothing like seeing or giving the students their diploma, right, right before they hit the stage, and just seeing the excitement and the energy that you get from that. I think that's like a hard moment to replicate, you know. And so, super proud of our students, and, you know, much congratulations on their success. And so, I hope to see them come back and do really great things in this community. So, Dr. Zuniga, do you have any other topics or issues you want to bring forward in the future?
Yes, Vice President Diaz, I have two items here. And speaking with my colleague and superintendent from the two elementary schools within Almani, Dr. Andrea and Dr. Garcia, we were thinking about a way to come together as a school community and support the community healing that, you know, from what had occurred yesterday. Our kids are asking questions. I think there's a sense of unity that we need to come together, and we want to be part of that. I contacted the mayor, reached out to her, said this is something that we would like to offer, anything that we can provide, whether it's our facilities, things that could be supportive of the Almani PD family, as well as the city as well. And so will my colleagues, too. So we're going to try to brainstorm about how we can do that as a school setting, to support not only our children, who are wondering, you know, how this impacts the community, right, and its healing process. So we'll continue to have a dialogue, hopefully come up with a plan to have a, not so much of a campaign, but more of a community outreach, specific to our school, than how we can support the Almani PD, as well as the City of Almani, too. So I just wanted to let you know that something I did. Also reached out to city manager as well, expressed our condolences on behalf of the district, and offered our services, whatever we can do to support at this time, too. Last, I have seen this as an opportunity for us to extend our relationship and partnership with Rio Hondo through its foundation. And I was interested in knowing if the board would deplore the contribution to the foundation, as many of our kids go down their scholarship opportunities to the foundation, as well as, they're actually having an event this Friday that I think Alma had shared with you, the Taste of Rio Hondo, to support the foundation. And I think the benefit of a school, our school district is, these dollars will go back to our kids once they get there. Not only do they support us with the academies that have been established, you know, obviously, we've seen what Early College Academy has done at South Almani High School, and the contributions that they provide to our students on campuses every day. So I'm suggesting a thousand dollar contribution to the foundation to support an ongoing education of our students for the foundation.
I would be in support of that.
I think last time, for South Almani-Almani Emergency Resource Association, didn't we do five, five thousand?
I think it was five thousand.
Yeah, I would be open to increasing that to five.
I'm okay with five, you know, being alumni, and they've always been invested in our, in our, in our school district. And we will forever be indebted to them when we piloted the Early College Academy. I mean, we were at that event, and just the pride that the students took in being a part of that, and just listening to the parents of how their kids had already not finished high school, but had already accumulated, you know, some of them, like, close to, like, what was it, twenty, twenty units? Twenty, twenty-four units? I mean, just watching the parents and the principal and everybody talk about that. Rio Hondo has been an amazing partner with us, and with the Early College, the transcripts, and Dr., what is her name? She's no longer there, but she was institutional in the whole ECHA program. Melva?
Dr. Castro.
Yeah, Dr. Castro, you know. And then, not only that, they also send administration to come and show their face and be here in person. They sent all their administration to come here to be supportive of us. So I have no problem, you know, they support us, we support them. So I'm okay, I'm open to five thousand as well.
You okay with that? Stories of Segres, five thousand? Yeah?
I'm good with that.
We'll go ahead and match what we did with the others. I'm just gonna confirm that, and I think, I believe it was five thousand. And we'll, I'll put that in your memo, just to make sure that we have what we have confirmed for the opportunities for the other organizations or the winner.
And there's, you said there's an event this one Friday, or what did you say?
Yeah, there's a Friday event.
Taste of Rio.
If you are interested in.
I've got my ticket.
Oh, you got a ticket, okay.
I bought my ticket.
How much is the ticket?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
For the non-VIP.
For the what?
For the non-VIPs, it's seventy-five.
Okay.
There is a VIP ticket, but that's a little too rich for my blood.
Okay. I think with the five thousand dollar contribution, we'll get some tickets, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you would like to ask for register, you, please let us know. So if this Friday, this Friday, though, I know it's a quick turnaround, so if you'd like to do that. Anyone interested in doing that?
I'll go.
I mean, I'm going, so.
Okay, you're good, okay.
I'll talk to my people.
Are you interested in attending the, are you interested in attending the actual Taste of Rio Hondo to represent the district?
Mrs. Torres Segres would also like a ticket as well.
One, two.
I'm okay, I'm gonna.
So we have two registrations that we'll take care of tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga, excellent idea.
Recommendation, thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you, sir.
Any, those are your two items, right? Okay, thank you, Dr. Zuniga. So with that, we're gonna close session. We don't need to reconvene, because we've already addressed the items before open session. And so now, we'll move on to number three, which is the report out from closed session.
Thank you, Vice President Diaz. For item A, excuse me, the board approved a settlement agreement in OEH case number two zero two two zero three zero zero two zero, in the amount of four thousand and five hundred dollars. The agreement was approved by a vote of four zero. For item B, the board gave direction, no action taken. And then for items C, D, E, and F, no action taken.
Thank you. So with that, we are gonna move to adjournment of the meeting, and tonight, we will be adjourning in memory of Corporal Michael Paredes and Officer Joseph Santana. May they rest in peace. Thank you, and have a good night.
Amen.